All right, the Durham Public Schools Board of Education Monthly Meeting is now in session. Thank you for your patience. We're starting a little behind schedule this evening. At this time, we wish to extend a warm welcome to everyone who's joining us. The purpose of this meeting is to inform our parents, staff, and constituents about the work aligned with our mission to embrace, educate, and empower every student to innovate, serve, and to lead. The interpreters for tonight are Consuelo Noron and Karen Reyes. Thank you all for taking the time to join us. We also have one of our colleagues, Ms. Emily Chavez, is joining us virtually this evening. We also have a student joining us from the Superintendent's Student Advisory Council. We have Christian Riley. Christian is a student at Hillside, a junior at Hillside High School, current. Awesome. Thank you so much for joining us this evening. Right, so the next item on our agenda is a moment of silence. Thank you. The next item on our agenda is celebrations. Ms. Cooper.
Good evening Chair Umstead, members of the board, Superintendent Lewis, Durham Public Schools colleagues, and members of the Durham community. Tonight, we honor the people who represent the heart and soul of our school district, our students, educators, staff, and community partners who inspire excellence every single day. October has been a month of energy, engagement, and achievement across Durham Public Schools. From classrooms filled with curiosity and creativity to campuses buzzing with school pride, we've seen countless examples of what it means to ignite limitless potential. These moments remind us that our collective success is driven by the extraordinary people who make Durham Public Schools not just a system of schools, but a community of learners, leaders, and change makers. We begin celebrations by recognizing our October Student of the Month, followed by our 2025-26 Principal of the Year. Then we will acknowledge our Teacher of the Month and Employee of the Month, and we will conclude with our Spark Pen presentations. Please welcome Principal Emmett Alexander of Northern High School to present our October Student of the Month.
Good afternoon Chair Umstead, board members, Superintendent, everyone in the room. Senior Josiah Moore has a presence that changes any room. He is a scholar athlete that is motivated by love. Staff members and fellow students vote for his positive attributes. He has been described as kind, pleasant, and able to relate to any student on campus. Josiah credits his mother for the impact she has made on his life and how he carries himself. And I quote Josiah, "Her constant love and feedback has a huge impact on my accomplishments." His achievements are stacking up as he makes his way toward life after high school and prepares for the collegiate pathway. He's a member of the varsity basketball team, serves as captain. He was crowned Homecoming King this year. He serves as the president of the Men of Valor Club and has maintained an A average while balancing extracurricular activities and work. Josiah states that the challenge is also balancing in being present and not stressing out about the future while struggling to stay grounded. Josiah contemplates matriculating to either the University of North Carolina in Charlotte, the University of North Carolina at Chapel Hill, or East Carolina University. As he relates to a career and he seeks a lucrative career focusing on financial stability. Josiah is a student who epitomizes the ideal young man. His mother, Ashley Moore, accompanies him this evening. It gives me great pleasure to introduce Josiah to the room.
Congratulations Josiah. It is wonderful to hear about all of the things that you are doing at Northern High School, how you are leading and representing Durham Public Schools. And that is exactly why you are here tonight, for us to recognize you. So we have a few things to celebrate your accomplishment this evening. First, your official Student of the Month certificate. You receive a Spark Pen for representing our district's core beliefs, and we hope that you wear this proudly in and around Northern and in and around Durham and wherever your collegiate career takes you. And our friends at Triangle eCycling want to make sure that you are powered for success wherever you go, so that's why they are presenting you with a laptop this evening. And we're not done yet. We have a very special presentation provided by our partners at Families and Community Rising, whose commitment to student and family well-being helps our young people thrive from the very beginning. Joining us this evening are Ray Trapp, Director of Communications and Development, and Cheryl Wallfall, Flag Executive Assistant, to present you with a $250 gift card tonight. Congratulations Josiah. We are excited to see what you do. And please be welcomed and congratulated by our board. Congratulations. October is Principals Month, Principals Month, and we are also proud to recognize Dr. Vanessa Alfred, our 2025-26 Principal of the Year. Dr. Alfred exemplifies excellence, and we are grateful for her service to our district. Dr. Alfred leads with both her head and her heart, setting high expectations not only of her students, but also of her staff while ensuring that joy, belonging, and love of learning are at the center of the work. Under her leadership, the C.C. Spalding Elementary Eagles are soaring to greater heights, making gains academically while staying grounded socially and emotionally. While inspiring students, she equally pours into her staff as she knows that our educators need support just like their students. This and so much more is what makes her most deserving of this honor. Now, we were able to surprise Dr. Alfred earlier this month. Her students organized a special assembly to thank her for all of the great things that she does as a leader, and we were there to surprise her for this honor. And so congratulations, Dr. Alfred. We are so proud of you. Thank you for all that you do for our students. At this time, please welcome Michelle Hayes, Executive Director of Talent Acquisition and Employee Recognition, to present our Teacher and Employee of the Month awards.
Good evening Chairman, Chair Umstead, members of the board, Superintendent Lewis, and Cabinet members. Today, we come together to celebrate our Teacher and Employee of the Month. Each month, we take time to recognize a teacher and an employee who's a non-teacher who exemplifies greatness, tenacity, perseverance, and leadership. Honories are selected based on the month's theme, and this recognition is a meaningful way to celebrate the incredible individuals who make Durham Public Schools such a special place. Our employees feel deeply honored when their hard work and dedication are acknowledged and celebrated. This evening, we are proud to recognize our October Teacher and Employee of the Month. Our Teacher of the Month recognition is sponsored by North Carolina Central's Tennis Program, University's Tennis Program, the Tonside Chapter of Omega Psi Phi Fraternity Incorporated, and DCL Consulting LLC. Our Employee of the Month recognition is proudly sponsored by the Office of Human Resources. The theme for our October Employee of the Month is selflessness. This recognition honors an individual who consistently places the well-being of others before their own, someone who's patient, kind, humble, and always willing to lend a helping hand. We are going to recognize our teacher first, then our employee. Our October Teacher of the Month is Olivia Roth, EC Resource Teacher from George Watts Montessori Elementary School. She was surprised by Coach Lawson and his team, and he will have special remarks after I describe you for just a second. Olivia joined George Watts Montessori as a first-year EC teacher last year. Thank you. We need EC teachers. If you know any friends, come on. And from day one, we knew we had hit the jackpot in teacher recruitment. She embodies calmness, care, and quiet strength, qualities her students need and rely on daily. Olivia responds immediately to support her students through challenges, always with compassion and patience. A powerful example of her character occurred recently when a student experienced a significant emotional crisis. Amid a tense situation that involved waiting for a guardian arrival, Olivia didn't hesitate to climb into the backseat of a police cruiser to be with her student, offering steady reassurance and emotional support during those difficult moments. After she told me, "I know this may sound strange, but I want you to know for the future, I will do it again." That statement captures who she is, a teacher who shows up fully for her students no matter the circumstances. Olivia lifts out true empathy every day. Brené Brown describes empathy as not just recognizing someone's pain, but climbing down in the hole with them. That's exactly who Olivia is. She stands, she doesn't stand on the sidelines, offering comfort from afar. She steps into her students' hardest moments with them. Her selflessness and unwavering commitment to her students' well-being make her an extraordinary educator and a shining example of what it means to serve with heart. Congratulations to Olivia for being named Durham Public Schools' October Teacher of the Month.
Good evening, everyone. Yesterday, the North Carolina Central University men's and women's coaching staff had an opportunity to surprise Ms. Roth. And we are sorry that we had to interrupt one of your teacher conferences there, but again, we would like to congratulate you for this honor. Would like to also recognize Principal Aguar for recognizing your exceptional talent. And on behalf of DCL Consulting LLC, we'd like to also present you with a small token in honor of today's recognition. So again, congratulations.
So you can also get a bag of goodies with a Spark Pen. Take your picture, Donna. Our October Employee of the Month is Avaryon Ron Wayland, Director of Digital Learning from Curriculum and Instruction. And he adjusted his schedule. I thank you so much. He said, "I'm going to be here tonight." Ron Wayland embodies selflessness in everything he does. When I read October's theme, "Individuals who constantly place the well-being of others above their own, showing patient, kindness, humility, and genuine willingness to help and support those around them," Ron immediately came to mind. Ron is one of the most helpful and responsive people in central service in all of Durham Public Schools. He is a constant source of support, knowledge, and kindness. I email him, as many of us do, with questions about clever, syncing student and teacher profiles, NCA Cloud, QR codes, and countless other programs. And somehow, he always replies instantly, even when I insist, "Please don't respond tonight." Recently, at a district training he was attending as a participant, Ron didn't hesitate to help others troubleshoot their issues. He jumped right in to answer questions about Infinite Canvas, M-Class, syncing, and more, offering his expertise with the same calm, humble spirit that defines him. And in the true Ron fashion, he even shared his grapes when I forgot my lunch. So of course, I'm reading from the person nominated. Ron's deep knowledge, responsiveness, and genuine care make everyone around him feel supported. His patience, generosity, and commitment to helping others makes him an invaluable part of DPS. We are all better because of Ron's selflessness and kindness. So congratulations to you for being named Durham Public Schools' October Employee of the Month. Hold on, you also get a bag of goodies? We always take a picture with the plaque. Yeah.
We close this evening with our Spark Pen presentations. The Spark Pen is one of the highest honors in Durham Public Schools, recognizing members of the DPS and Durham communities who go above and beyond to bring our mission to life. Tonight, we celebrate two community partners who ignite the spark in others through their service and passion for students and whose generosity and commitment exemplify the very best of Durham. and whose generosity and commitment exemplify the very best of Durham. Triangle Grace Church has been a steadfast supporter of Fayetteville Street Elementary School, making a meaningful and lasting impact on the lives of students, families, and staff. At the beginning of each school year, Triangle Grace Church volunteers show up to assist teachers in preparing their classrooms, helping to create welcoming spaces where students can learn and thrive from day one. Throughout the year, they provide tutoring and academic support, ensuring that our scholars receive the extra encouragement they need to reach their full potential. Their care extends far beyond academics. Triangle Grace Church consistently provides meals for staff and families during school events, and they organize hygiene drives that supply essential items for both students and teachers, small gestures that make a big difference. Their partnership reflects the spirit of shared responsibility that defines Durham Public Schools. When schools and community come together, students succeed. Tonight, we are proud to celebrate Triangle Grace Church as an outstanding community partner and an example of what it means to invest deeply in our schools and in the future of our children. Accepting on behalf of Triangle Grace Church is Jenny Schaefer, Local Outreach Team Leader. We have another partner of Fayetteville Street Elementary School, but I know they have been active in other places in and around Durham Public Schools. We recognize New Hope Church for their outstanding dedication and unwavering service. A true ambassador of community partnership, New Hope Church provides hands-on support that has strengthened relationships, deepened engagement, and meaningfully improved outcomes for students and families alike. Their generosity is both heartfelt and far-reaching, from hosting staff retreats that promote wellness, reflection, and unity, to ensuring that students begin the year equipped with a backpack and school supplies. New Hope Church continually demonstrates a deep investment in the success and well-being of our scholars. Throughout the year, they have uplifted teachers and families through acts of kindness, providing meals, resources, and encouragement that reminds us what collective care looks like in action. New Hope's compassion, consistency, and collaboration have made a lasting impact, creating a stronger, more connected community for all. Accepting on behalf of New Hope is Pam Watson, Missions Pastor. This concludes our celebrations this evening.
Thank you, Ms. Cooper, and to all of those who were celebrated this evening, one of my favorite parts of our meeting. The next item on our agenda is our Superintendent's Update. I'll pass it to you, Dr. Lewis.
Thank you so much. Good evening, Chair Umstead, members of the Board, DPS community, both here in person and that may be watching online. In addition to the excitement that we just witnessed in the talented staff and students that we have in this district, I'm also pleased to share some exciting highlights of our school year, the work we're continuing to do to progress Durham Public Schools forward. Again, welcome, Christian, also a member of the, you heard, Student Superintendent Advisory Council, but also a member of the inaugural cohort of Pixel and Pen, which is our newest student content team that's powered by Office of Student Affairs. So excited to have you here and also understand you serve as theater, sound light, guru, tech, all the things. So excited to have you here. Absolutely. Yes, absolutely. We need you. Yes. Next slide, please. October is Disability History and Awareness Month. We certainly appreciate our Board earlier this month taking action and issuing a proclamation recognizing this important observance and reaffirming our commitment to inclusive education for all. At Durham Public Schools, we believe that inclusion strengthens every classroom and every community. Awareness and understanding helps ensure that every student feels seen, valued, and supported, reaching their full potential. Next slide. October is also Bullying Prevention Awareness Month. In DPS, we believe that every child deserves to learn in a space free from fear, intimidation, or exclusion. This month and every month, we encourage our students, staff, and families to speak up, stand up, stand together, and show kindness in action. By promoting empathy, respect, and understanding, we strengthen the culture of care that defines the DPS community. And that means all of our students, every single one of our students, regardless of immigration status. We are here to protect and honor all of our students. Next slide. There's a lot to celebrate in October, as you can see, and the celebration continues with our National Principals Month. Our principals are the heartbeat of DPS. They are champions for students, advocates for teachers, and partners with families and communities. Their leadership, courage, and compassion set the tone for excellence in every classroom. As we honor their tireless dedication, I want to extend my deepest gratitude to each of our principals for inspiring others, nurturing potential, and igniting the spark that keeps our schools moving forward. To all of our principals, we see you and we thank you. Next slide. Speaking of principals, and earlier this evening, we proudly recognized Dr. Vanessa Alford, our 25, 26 Durham Public Schools Principal of the Year. Dr. Alfred's leadership at C.C. Spalding Elementary School exemplifies excellence and a steadfast commitment to student success. Her ability to inspire her staff, engage families, and create joyful, a joyful culture of learning has made a lasting impact on our school, community, and across the district. And under her leadership, this is just, again, a true testament to the leader that she is. We also had a couple other of the years that came out of C.C. Spalding this year. We had our Instructional Assistant of the Year, as well as Assistant Principal of the Year, who's now, who was here with us, Dr. Farmer over at Fayetteville. He was actually Assistant Principal of the Year last year. And so, we congratulate Dr. Alfred on this well-deserved honor and thank her for embodying the very best of what it means to lead in Durham Public Schools. Next slide. We're excited to share that this month, this month, we launched Pulse, an enhanced collaboration between Durham Public Schools Students Support Services and Alliance Health. Pulse is our expanded mental health framework designed to strengthen services to our students by providing timely access to care, wraparound supports, and school-based resources that empower students to thrive inside and outside of the classroom. This partnership reflects Durham Public Schools' unwavering commitment to addressing the whole child, mind, body, and spirit, and also ensuring that every student has the support needed to thrive. So we certainly appreciate of our partners at Alliance Health for their partnership and supporting all of our scholars. Next slide. You know, the arts are the hallmark of Durham Public Schools, showcasing the creativity, the diversity, and the talent that make our district shine. Through a robust array of programs in visual arts, music, dance, theater, digital media, our students bring learning to life in ways that inspire both heart and mind. Throughout the year, our schools host performances, showcases, and exhibitions to celebrate student expression and invite families, staff, and community members to experience the arts together. So this photo that you see here is from Stage Center 2025, held this month, where over 400 Durham Public Schools Theater students spent the day learning from industry professionals and arts educators from across our region. Moments like these truly reflect our shared belief that the arts unite us, nurture creativity, and inspire greatness in all of our scholars. Next slide. This week, Durham Public Schools proudly joins the nationwide celebration of Lights On After School, recognizing the vital role that after-school programs play in supporting students' success and strengthening our communities. Each afternoon, DPS after-school programs provide safe, engaging spaces where students can explore their interests, build confidence, and develop essential life skills. From academics and the arts to athletics and enrichment activities, these programs keep the lights shining brightly on learning long after school is dismissed. So thank you to our dedicated staff and community partners who make these opportunities possible for our scholars and families. Next slide. Just today, DPS hosted Accelerate. This is for our eighth-grade students across the district. More than 60 local businesses and organizations in the Career Expo, designed to ignite the curiosity and ambition in our scholars as they began to discover pathways to careers across our community. Today's event was filled with hands-on activities, demonstrations, and interactive conversations with local employers to help students envision their futures and take the first step toward college, career, and life success. A huge thank you to our Career and Technical Education Department for their leadership, and to our parent, parenting sponsor, Nova Nordus, and other corporate sponsors, McAdams, Hazen, Kimley Horn, Lilly, Quantity, Montiet, DPS Foundation, and the numerous participating organizations and volunteers for their support of this event. And often tell people that the future workforce of Durham County sits right inside of our classrooms, and that the more we have opportunities to expose our students to the careers that are available right here in Durham, the better. And so, with this Accelerate event, it's, it's our way of really sparking or igniting that limitless potential in every single child. So the joy that we saw on our students' faces today was a true testament that this was definitely a huge event. And so, thanks to our Board members that came out to witness this as well. Next slide. DPS was proud to join Durham Technical College, Community College, and Nova Nordus in launching the BioWorks Certificate Program at Southern School of Energy and Sustainability last week. This partnership gives career and college-promised students a head start in the biotechnology and advanced manufacturing industries. Students engage in hands-on learning experiences that prepare them for the real world. Certainly thank our partners over at Durham Tech and Nova Nordus for making this a reality for our scholars. And so, again, this is a life-changing opportunity for our students over at Southern. We're super excited that our partners have joined in this venture with us. Next slide. Throughout October, DPS is celebrating Bike and Road to School Month, encouraging students and families to embrace active, healthy, and environmentally-friendly ways to get to school. Across the district, schools are hosting special events, group rides, and safety activities that promote wellness, sustainability, and community connection. These efforts not only help students build lifelong habits of physical activity, but also highlight the importance of safe routes and shared responsibilities on our roads. Next slide. On tonight's agenda, consent agenda, we're excited to announce the arrival of two electric school buses. Yes, that's exciting. Which will soon be hitting the road to transport our students safely and sustainably. These buses mark the beginning of a new era of clean transportation for our district. And this is made possible through a $15 million Environmental Protection Agency, or EPA Clean Bus, I'm sorry, Clean School Bus Grant. Over the coming months, additional buses will join the fleet, reducing emissions, improving air quality, and lowering operational costs. This initiative reflects our continued commitment to environmental stewardship, innovation, and the health and well-being of our students and community. So on tonight's consent agenda, we're asking the Board to approve 32, the purchase of 32 of these buses that will slowly roll into Durham Public Schools. So we're super excited about that. Next slide. I'd like to take a moment to congratulate our DPS Board Member, Mr. Wendell Tab, on receiving the Joseph R. Biden Presidential Lifetime Achievement Award. Mr. Tab received the recognition at a special ceremony held on October 11th for his contributions to the Durham community. Well done, Mr. Tab. We appreciate it and super excited that you were able to receive this award. So congratulations. Next slide. Today, DPS launched a period of community engagement on the district's cell phone policy, which is Policy 42, I'm sorry, 4318, draft policy, yes, draft policy. We want feedback on the draft policy. And so, we're inviting students, families, staff, and community members to share feedback and additional considerations through October 29th. Earlier this year, the North Carolina General Assembly passed House Bill 959, which requires local school boards to adopt policies that limit student cellphone use during instructional time. In response, DPS is seeking thoughtful input from our stakeholders to ensure that our policy reflects both the intent of the legislation and the needs of our school community. And so, we certainly encourage all voices to participate in this important conversation. Links were shared via email in today's weekly Spark Newsletter, and will also be shared on our social media accounts. We've already heard some critical feedback from our principals, Superintendents, Teacher, and Student Advisory Councils. Do you remember we had that conversation?
Yep.
As well as, that was our first meeting too, right? What a way to welcome you. As well as our parents ambassadors. And so, we've gotten some valuable feedback, and now we're just seeking the broader community's feedback. And so, we certainly look forward to hearing from all of our stakeholders. Next slide. The state of North Carolina still awaits passage of a full budget. And of course, you know, our federal government has now entered in its third week of shutdown. So during this time, I'm grateful for our community that advocates for our students, families, and educators in raising awareness on how these challenges can impact our mission. So we remain steadfast in our shared commitment to ensuring that every child in DPS continues to learn, grow, and thrive regardless of the circumstances around us. And so, we'll encourage this community to continue to reach out to our elected officials to share with them the urgency of passing a full budget. Next slide, this is the last slide. Last week, we hosted our first meeting, Confirmed Meeting, with the Durham Association of Educators, representing a meaningful step forward toward our ongoing good faith efforts to strengthen collaboration and to bring consensus between DPS and DAE on behalf of the 31,000-plus scholars who depend upon us daily to provide safe, a safe quality and wholesome education. Our commitment to our scholars will be a constant clarion call as we continue these critical conversations with DAE. The teaching and learning environment is a shared responsibility, and ensuring that our scholars receive an equitable and excellent education remains our North Star. We deeply value our educators and staff as essential partners in this work. Together, we can keep our focus where it matters the most, and that's on our scholars. And so, we pledge to continue to keep the lines of professional and civil communication open to ensure the success of our scholars. And then, also, in DPS, we are deeply committed to creating spaces where every family feels seen, heard, and supported. This month, we continue that commitment through our Cafe Con Pandose Sessions, intentional gatherings with our immigrant families to just simply listen, to learn, and to strengthen our partnership. These conversations provide an open and welcoming environment to share experiences, address concerns, and ensure that all families have access to the information and resources that they need to thrive. And so, as we continue to move forward, we will continue these critical conversations, reaffirming our promise to honor the dignity, diversity, and contributions that every member of this DPS community brings. This concludes my remarks this evening. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Lewis. So many good things happening in the district. I appreciate you also highlighting the need for a state budget. The General Assembly was busy this week not passing a budget, but gerrymandering maps. So it's really important that we really think about our priorities as far as our students and what we need as a district. All right, the next item on our agenda is Agenda Review and Approval. Move Approval of the Agenda. Second. It's been moved by Ms. Carter Otten and second by Ms. Harold Goff that we approve the agenda. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
I'm sorry, Ms. Chavez. We need to do a voice vote. Ms. Chavez?
This is Emily Chavez. I vote aye.
And then we'll go to Ms. Rogers.
Aye.
Ms. Harold Goff.
Aye.
Ms. Byer.
Aye.
Mr. Tab.
Aye.
Ms. Carter Otten.
Aye.
And I vote aye as well, so it passes unanimously. The next item on our agenda is the Board of Education Monthly Meeting Minutes from September 25th, 2025.
Move Approval of the Board Regular Monthly Minutes from September 25th, 2025.
Second.
It's been moved by Ms. Harold Goff, seconded by Ms. Byer. Is there any discussion? We'll do another voice vote. Ms. Chavez?
This is Emily Chavez. I vote aye.
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 I vote aye as well. It passes unanimously. The next item on our agenda is general public comments. I'll do a quick review of the rules before we get started. First, please state your name. And if you're speaking for an organization, state your name and the name of the organization. Second, speakers are asked to present their comments in three minutes. When the yellow light comes on, you will have one minute left to start winding up your remarks. When the red light comes on, it will beep, which indicates your time is up. Complaints about named staff, students or parents should not be voiced in open session. However, we are very interested in hearing your concerns with regard to the public ed- to public education, safety of students or to the operations of the school system. Finally, the board members will listen carefully and consider the comments, but we do not engage in a discussion with speakers. So, our first speaker will be Greg Paget, Paget, please correct me, followed by Katie McGonale and Patricia Russick.
Okay, thank you very much. My name is Greg Paget. I'm a, I'm on the Board of Directors of the McMahon and Methodist Church here in Durham, and I have two kids, the, uh, two grandkids rather, uh, in the DPS schools. McMahon currently provides volunteer support to both Hillendale and Forestview Elementary Schools. And we're also in the process of establishing an after-school program with the YMCA. So, we're actively involved in supporting DPS. Our goal with each school is to provide them with essential volunteers as well as supplies to be successful. But in the process of, of supporting them, I've discovered that each school has big needs for supplemental food for their students, especially for the disadvantaged. And that's why I'm here tonight to talk about how we can remedy that. I have found that both Wake and Guilford County Schools in North Carolina have implemented an innovative program that has dramatically reduced the amount of cafeteria food thrown away each day. They found that thirty to fifty percent of the food that is served goes in the trash, which is just unbelievable to me. Each system now collects and redistributes tons of food at each school through this program. Most important, both WRAL and NNO and the News and Observer have documented this successful program. And I'd be happy to share these articles with you. So, what's next? I want to conduct a pilot study of this exact same program at one or two DPS schools to confirm we can do the same thing. Unfortunately, I have had zero success in getting anybody to listen to me. I submitted a community partnership application, but ultimately it has gone nowhere. And I've sent multiple emails to DPS leadership, including some of you here today. Pardon me. So, that's my request tonight is to get an audience with appropriate leaders to discuss the features and benefits of this innovative program. Wouldn't it be great to redirect tons of perfectly good food that is today thrown in the trash and instead provide it for free to needy children at DPS? So, how can I get the right people to give me an audience to talk about my proposal? That's the question. I don't know what to do next. How do I get an answer to that question?
So, we typically do not engage in, uh, conversation with public comment speakers, but the superintendent is writing down your information right now so we can get a follow-up for you.
Okay.
Thank you.
All right.
Love to see those articles as well.
Thank you.
Next, we have Katie McGonale. Followed by Patricia Russick.
Aye. Um, I would just keep coming back, my friend. Sometimes it works. Um, quick Little River update. Monday morning, I discovered that my brand-new seat sacks, all fifteen of them are covered in mold. All fifteen. They retail at thirty-two, thirty-one, thirty-two dollars and thirty-one cents at Walmart. And I'm just here tonight to ask you where I can pick up my check. Um, I, I do want to say that last Wednesday, I was extremely impressed with the responsiveness of the district when our fire extinguisher exploded, um, on our hallway and disrupted school. Um, the cleanup crew arrived not long after the fire department left and immediately began remediation. Uh, by the next morning, the hallway was sparkling, a job seemingly well-done. But when my colleagues, who were directly across the hall from the said explosion, um, their classroom doors weren't even open. So, in, instead of our children engaging in quality instruction, uh, they were displaced outside to recess as their teacher, our instructional coach, our assistant principal, um, our, their teacher themselves, um, and our custodial staff cleaned up the mess. Um, it's strikingly symbolic to me that the only parts people could see were remediated. Uh, the visible hallway got the treatment, the unseen classrooms did not. This unfortunately feels like par for the course in this district. Um, you seem far more invested in image repair rather than structural. Uh, we've seen this pattern ongoing with our mold and air quality issues. Uh, the bare minimum gets done, enough to check a box, to make things look fine from the outside. While those of us who are inside, living and breathing in that space, we know every day that this is the otherwise. I have to ask this. When did doing the bare minimum become DPS's standard of care? When did silence replace transparency and appearances replace accountability? Our children, their families, my friends, your staff deserve better than performative fixes and photo ops. We deserve solutions that last longer than a news cycle. How can we hold people, how can you hold people accountable when we can't do that to you? So many times I've come here, it's exhausting. I pray for a frickin' change. You guys can keep this.
Hi, I'm Patricia Russick. I'm a teacher at Little River. The first time I spoke, I hoped you would act. The second, I came to challenge the facts. This third time, I speak for my students, silent and still, who breathe in the mold spores against their own will. You meet in closed sessions, doors shut tight, while our classroom's air is not right, both day and at night. You cannot claim progress when mold still prevails, nor claim improved while on the clock, teachers' health fails. We've read reports, evaluated mold spore counts, proof in hand, mold creeping silent on vents and walls that stand. Every day you delay, you teach a lesson. Inaction equals neglect. So, let this be the moment you decide to act and protect. Here are some of the numbers from the SMNE report presented to our, um, SIL team on September fifteenth. A six, which is a classroom, the mold spore count was twenty thousand mold spore counts per cubic meter of air. A ten, also a classroom, thirty thousand. B six, also a classroom, twenty-three thousand. My classroom wasn't tested, so I don't know what the spore count is, but I can tell you, I have one of those air vents, those that, that you have. The last time I was here, it was right behind you and that light was blue, was blue. It's not plugged in tonight, but I, I can show you pictures in my classroom. Mine has been red over and over again, day after day. I've had two new filters put in here. Building Services tells us that this indicates not what it actually indicates because quick Google image search can tell you that that red light means the sensor has detected significant amounts of airborne particles. And they suggest that you identify the source. Humidity could be one of them, which we know we have high levels of humidity. The red light is the purifier, will work harder to clean the air. If your light changes to orange, green or blue, which yours was blue the last time I was here, it means that it is improving the air quality. But Building Service told us, this doesn't indicate air quality. There was a second round of testing, and I have four seconds left, but they didn't test A six, A ten or B six. They were excluded from the second test.
Thank you. With that, we conclude public comment. The next item on our agenda is our consent items. We have items A through G. All of these have been reviewed by the Board of Education in advance of tonight's meeting.
Move approval of the consent agenda, items A through G.
Second? Uh, it's been moved by Ms. Byer and seconded by Ms. Harold Goff. Is there any other discussion? We'll do a voice vote. Ms. Chavez?
This is Emily Chavez and I vote aye.
Ms. Rogers?
Aye.
Ms. Harold Goff?
Aye.
Uh, Ms. Byer?
Aye.
Mr. Tab?
Aye.
Ms. Carter Otten?
Aye.
And I vote aye as well. It passes unanimously. The consent items pass unanimously. The next item on our agenda is a, um, presentation from the Durham Public Schools Foundation. We're excited to have our partners with us this evening. This update is an annual update that they bring to the Board of Education, um, regarding what's happening with their work. Um, I'll pass it now to Ms. Brianna Kennedy, Interim Executive Director at Durham Public Schools Foundation.
Thank you so much, uh, Chair Umstead, Dr. Lewis, remainder of the Durham Public Schools Board of Education. Super appreciative of your time this evening and we won't be before you long, but we do, uh, entertain, want to entertain whatever questions you might have. Um, I also want to extend my gratitude to Darian Harris and the CTE Department for today's Accelerate Career Exploration Event. It's always a great day for me when I actually get to see students in their environment, uh, and just thinking and sparking that curiosity. I'm Brianna Kennedy, Interim Executive Director at Durham Public Schools Foundation, and I'm joined by my teammate, Lindsay Smith. Uh, and like I said, we won't be before you long and appreciate your intention and curiosity. Next slide, please. Over at Durham Public Schools Foundation, a major piece of our work includes strengthening the ecosystem of support around our students. To give you a bit of background for our work, we formally organized in twenty-eighteen through many conversations between DPS leadership, uh, members of the business community, along with community-rooted folks who understood and saw the need for an independent nonprofit to support our students, educators and families. Uh, you've seen us in action over the years' drawn support during the COVID-nineteen pandemic to get students' computers and the digital tools, tools necessary to access learning, as well as coordinating community support to feed students during remote learning. During these formative years, our quick and intentional actions allowed us to strengthen a few muscles and set our sights on our constant focus, our public school students. We believe that our schools and thus our students don't succeed in isolation and it is our duty to anchor this ecosystem of support around them through our approach. This includes supporting our teachers, organizing families and preparing students for their future. Next slide, please. When thinking of ways that we support our teachers, I'm extremely excited to talk a little bit about one of the major highlights this year is our Innovation in Whole Schools Fund. Our grants and grantee cohort are off to a great start. We are supporting twenty-seven projects across twenty-six schools to spark innovative solutions to today's most pressing student needs and extend student learning and classroom experience. As in years past, our grantee cohort will be led through the project year with regular check-ins, trainings and technical assistance by my teammates to ensure we're able to learn any rising practices that can be scaled, uh, and sustained. I'm also happy to report that the Crayon Stick Calculators Program, who we've officially, uh, and formally partnered with now, uh, have already distributed forty thousand dollars worth of school supplies directly to DPS classrooms and the first quarter of the traditional year has not ended yet. Uh, through our electronic ordering and an army of con- consistent volunteers, DPS educators are able to get necessary supplies for their classrooms with just a few finger taps. In this program, we're also able to predict and respond to changing seasons and thus needs. We're appreciative of those who will provide us with feedback on our program and any changes that we need to make operationally. In supporting our educators, we also aim to connect them with resources to decrease the mental load of the classroom and tools to assist in their personal well-being and professional development. Next slide. In thinking of the ways that we organize our families, we've got a couple of things coming up. Um, and one of the things I remember as a classroom educator is the importance of that day-one phone call. Um, we believe it is necessary to stretch our work beyond, uh, that particular practice and center parents as experts on their children and their needs. To that end, we offer a variety of trainings and spaces to support parent-to-school communication, conversations about life after graduation and do the necessary relationship building to connect families to other partners in the community, offering a myriad of support. This year, I'm excited for us to also train up about seventy volunteers right here in Durham on the new FAFSA application so they're able to help our seniors on their next step in transition into college. Through our FAFSA Navigator Program, we've already trained forty-one folks and will continue to provide this free training to increase the number of students completing the FAFSA. We know this application will open doors to a number of scholarships and grants for students entering higher education and we'll be training DPS counselors in the coming months so that they are able to provide this support to families completing the application this year. On the post-secondary journey, we'll also be working with families to refine a Durham-specific college-going guide with timelines and milestones, discussion topics and partner organizations offering post-secondary support. We'll utilize this process to get feedback on its ease of use, uh, and whether or not it actually made a difference in the college-going journey for our seniors. As we do our best to respond to the ongoing mental health crisis across our community, we've invested in mental health first aid trainings for families to participate in. During these trainings, adults learn the shared language necessary to recognize and respond to the signs of a mental health challenges or even substance abuse in our youth. This training is then paired with our Thrive Guide that we've developed, uh, to provide resources and activities for families to complete together to continue discussing their own social emotional needs. Next slide. And in our final pillar of work, when thinking of preparing our students, we believe it's necessary to ensure our students are prepared to solve today and tomorrow's problems. We're deeply invested in bringing many resources right here in Durham directly to them. For the third year, we are partnering with Durham County Library, Duke University and LEAP to host Homework con amigos every day at the main library. During this time, students are offered tutoring on the subjects identified while their parents engage in conversation around other pressing needs. We are also continuing our partnership with Every Child NC and the North Carolina Justice Center to train up students to understand the education landscape here at home and the legislative conditions, Chair Umstead, preventing our public schools from being fully funded. Uh, we're also excited this year to award about sixty-two thousand dollars in scholarships on our own. That application will launch, uh, in the new year and you can look forward to the launch of the Durham Scholars Hub later this fall so students have access to college application support and financial aid help online where we know they live in many cases. My teammate Lindsay here is going to talk a little bit of financials with you all, as well as some upcoming opportunities to get involved. After that, we'll be ready to take your questions. Next slide.
Thank you, Brianna. Hi, everyone. I'm Lindsay Smith, the Senior Manager for Development and Communications at the Foundation. So, I want to share a little bit more about the past school year. Um, as you can see there on the slide, we provided grants and sponsorships to our schools, as Brianna mentioned, as well as to administrative groups, CTE, the arts partnerships that we've made, um, totaling about three hundred and ten thousand dollars. Additionally, we provided stipends, scholarship, emergency funds to the broader DPS community totaling about three hundred and eighty-five thousand dollars. So, you can see there upwards of six hundred thousand dollars where we were able to take those funds and resources and put them directly back into DPS and the community of support. Um, there at the bottom of the slide, a little bit more detail, like many nonprofits, um, under the current administration and just kind of in the nonprofit landscape, we did, um, have a budget shortfall there last year, last school year. So, we've made some budget, um, tightening measures and are moving forward and feeling, uh, excited about where we are um, and the future to be sustainable in this work moving forward. Next slide, please. One, um, success that I wanted to highlight back- One, um, success that I wanted to highlight, back in March, we partnered with, um, Dr. Barnes in his new role now, um, but with the transportation team to launch the bus driver certification campaign, knowing that there were some financial barriers to getting bus drivers trained and on the road. So we were able to raise about $13,000, which was enough to provide 35 new bus drivers access, um, to be hired, trained, and, and get driving our students successfully to school. As of October 1st, we know that there are 20 new bus drivers on the road, so we're proud, um, of that accomplishment and being able to partner with you all and the, the team to make that a success, um, for our students and educators and, and create that, that support that they need. Next slide, please. Wanted to highlight a couple of opportunities. Um, Dr. Lewis, you mentioned Pults. Excited about, um, the whole, um, opportunities for our students and educators. We are launching our inaugural Soul Purpose Sneaker Ball, um, to continue to raise funds, uh, for mental health-related work and our grant-making where we provide, um, educators and students and community members with opportunities to propose, uh, mental health and wellness, uh, excuse me, projects from their school and, uh, transform their school from the inside out. So this event will take place on November 15th, and we hope to see many of you there. Of course, we are continuing our partnership with DPS Arts, so Evening to Shine is slated for February 24th next year, and details about that will come out in the early winter. And then, as Brianna mentioned, um, the Fast Navigator trainings, those are opportunities for the community to continue to get involved and volunteer with the foundation and Crayons to Calculators, uh, who joined us officially in January. Every single day, they're in the teacher warehouse packing up those supplies for the teachers and sending those out to the, to the schools. So those are great opportunities for our local businesses, for individuals to come and volunteer and be part of that great work. Next slide, please. Just want to take this opportunity to thank you for the continued partnership and the opportunity to engage so that we have thriving schools, and we know that Durham thrives when our students and educators thrive, so thank you for this, and we'll open the floor back to Brianna, but to, for you all to ask any questions as well.
Thank you both for being here this evening and for all the work that you do for Durham Public Schools, for all of our schools, our students, families, and the greater community. Uh, we'll open the floor for questions. I'll start with Ms. Chavez. Do you have any questions? Or comments?
I do not have any questions, but I just thank you for all your work and supporting our students. I love this update, um, and just seeing all the, um, all the work that's happening, um, to, you know, support, uh, a lot of projects that can't, um, that we want to support but, um, can't all directly happen with our funding, um, through DPS, so thank you for, for everything that you're doing.
Ms. Chavez, one member, colleague? Ms. Byer? And I'm sorry, Mr. Tab, do you want to go first? Mr. Tab, and then I'll go to Ms. Byer.
Just wanted to say thank you so very much for the work that you all are doing and supporting our students. I didn't have a direct question, but I did want to really, really say thank you about the bus drivers. Uh, we really, really needed that, so, um, thank you for all that you do, but I did want to shout out that, that one piece in it. It really stood out for me because we really, really needed it, so thank you.
So, um, such, such gratitude for your leadership, such gratitude for the work that you're doing in the community, um, and all the ways that you are, um, amplifying, um, innovative practices within DPS. Um, I look forward to ways that y'all can share from the grants back to us what is impactful. I know every time I, I read those applications, our, our educators have amazing ideas, and, um, some of them are not that expensive as far as things that we might take to scale, uh, more broadly. So any, um, reporting that you all do out about that, I think would be incredibly helpful to the board as we look to retain, um, educators and staff. Um, wanted to shout out the, the fact that the foundation convenes and staffs the Academic Success Alliance, which is a great convening of nonprofits in this community, including, um, our dearly beloved departed Warren Langley was always a faithful, uh, attender of that convening, and appreciate y'all hosting that and staffing it and breaking down silos in this community as we share best practices together. Um, my one question for you all is, as we face a landscape that is ever-hostile to public schools, where there is misinformation about charter schools actually being better than public schools, about private schools being better and having better outcomes, how are you all thinking of helping us amplify that, the message, and getting the truth out within the greater Durham community? Um, because you sit in a unique place to, to lift that message up, so thanks.
Thank you so much for that, uh, question, and one, uh, response for, for Mr. Tab here. It is our honor to be responsive in the way that we are with our fundraising, and, and we find it to be our duty, especially, uh, for me. I know I've told folks here on the dais, I do this selfishly because I have a current DPS student, and I want him and his peers to, to succeed. When thinking of the ways that we are able to amplify the message of our public schools, it's by ensuring that we're in spaces outside of this particular room and being able to share that directly with funders, but also our folks in the corporate space who often retract from such conversations. Um, a number of individuals that we've been able to work within our family organizing work have also learned quite a bit about the U.S. education system in general, but in particular, the landscape here in North Carolina. I'm sure y'all know little Miss Luna over at, well, she's a middle schooler now, um, but one of the, the youth that we've been able to work and kind of coach throughout this particular, uh, time has really learned quite a bit from our partners at Every Child NC, um, and being able to be in those sorts of spaces, be heard Durham, to share with folks the need to actually invest in our public schools, and parents' investment being their students, uh, as the, as the number one, um, has been critical in even us learning what the needs are. Um, you'll see a few things from us in written form through our newsletters, as well as on our social media fa- um, pages as we go through the redistricting process, uh, here in North Carolina yet again. Um, but it is a place that where we feel comfortable stepping into and have in the past and will continue to do so.
Appreciate it. Anything, any help that y'all can give in that space, I think, is, um, is really critical as we face another stretch of, um, combating misinformation and disinformation in, in the community, but, um, thank you so, so much.
Comments? Any other col- colleagues? Any other comments? Questions? Thank y'all so much for being here. Thank you for your continued support of our students. We can't wait to see you at some of these great events.
Yeah, see y'all.
I would just echo all that was said, um, and personally thank our partners over at the Durham Public Schools Foundation for all that you do. Uh, I often say that schools can't do this work alone, and the gaps that you fill in for us are certainly appreciated, so thank you.
Thank you. Alright, the next item on our agenda is a classified salary study update from Mr. Teeter.
Good evening, Chair Umstead, board members, and Dr. Lewis. Um, we do have a presentation that was prepared very quickly on the heels of the Meet and Confer meeting and wanted to, um, just honor our commitment that we would, uh, seek feedback, uh, through the meet and confer process last week, uh, and, and then in turn, just kind of share our reflections on that, um, that are very preliminary. Um, but, uh, but wanted to really, um, just kind of share how we're thinking about that and, and sort of how we're moving forward as a result of that feedback that we received. So I think we just through the presentation, again, just on the first slide, lift up a reminder of the goals. Um, and I think currently our grade, um, is we've got a green check, we've got one red X and one blue question mark, um, from our colleagues at DAE. So we're working to, um, as we push forward, we look forward to having three green checks, uh, by the time we're done, and so we'll, um, sort of move forward, um, with our diligence there in that process. Um, we can advance a couple of more slides, uh, as just a, a reminder of the various, uh, iterations of minimum wages that are around us, um, that we're contemplating, um, a- as we do this work, um, and just noting, um, that for us, you know, we're currently sitting at 1751 an hour for the lowest, uh, wage that we pay for any particular job in the district, uh, and, and keeping that number front and center a- as what we're trying to work forward from, uh, with, with some ultimate model, um, in time for the budget process. We can move forward one more, and I think this, um, we, we discussed this, uh, at the last meeting, and then this is certainly a space that had a lot of conversation, uh, at the Meet and Confer meeting, and, uh, we, we talk about that in a, in a upcoming slide, just sort of the notion of what those existing state scales are, uh, with their minimums and their maximums, uh, and, and in particular, uh, conversation around the maximum component of that. Um, and so in, in recent years, we have found ourselves in school systems where, um, mostly with bus drivers, uh, it's a space where we have been exceeding the maximum historically in school systems as we've been fighting to, um, get bus drivers and, and hold on to those, uh, those employees. Uh, and so, um, mechanically, in order for us to make that work, um, the portion of a bus driver pay that goes up to that maximum threshold, we pay in our state transportation funds, and then the, the, the smaller portion that might tip over that maximum, we pay that from our local funds. And, and so you'll have, you'll see a number of bus drivers that have two line items on their checks in order for us to sort of make that situation work with them, uh, exceeding, uh, the maximum. And, uh, usually it's not very many, but it's more so our folks that have been around for a while and have reached, uh, sort of the top of that scale, uh, with experience. So I just wanted to lift that out, and, and, um, there are some mechanisms, um, that we would want to consider in Durham if we proceed in a direction where we have populations outside of bus drivers, um, who start to work towards exceeding those, uh, those current, uh, state caps. Uh, on the next slide is just a reminder, uh, of just sort of the three perspective models that we've contemplated. Um, and, uh, obviously, the third model was of the greatest interest, um, from, uh, the meet and confer process, and that's the space, um, where they'd like to see us sort of work, um, over a three-year period of time, perhaps. And so, um, just wanted to lift those back up, uh, for contemplation. Um, on the next two, so two slides up, we, uh, sort of lift up sort of the first concern. Um, and so the starting salary needs to be a living wage, and I think we just want to, um, reiterate, right, that administration just does not disagree with that, right? We agree, right? It's important for us to, uh, do everything we can, uh, for our living wage to be, uh, our minimum wage to be a living wage here in Durham, um, and that we have to work in concert, um, with, with other stakeholders in order to accomplish that goal. Um, and, and just sort of lifting up that it is, it's hard work, but we're, we're committed to continuing to make positive progress, and, uh, did very much sort of appreciate the perspective, uh, from folks in Meet and Confer, and they know that, um, that this is not something that can happen in one year, uh, and that it's something that we work towards, um, and, and that we engage, uh, others in that process. Um, on the next slide, sort of the second concern that came up was just the, the work to mitigate, uh, compression. Uh, and I think we, um, had some good conversation around that, uh, in just sort of the beginnings of this. Um, really, uh, when, when the state minimum wage lifted to $13 an hour a few years ago, subsequently to $15 an hour very quickly after that, a lot of school systems in North Carolina found ourselves with compressed salary schedules because we, um, had to make that minimum wage work that was, in some cases, a large jump. Uh, but at the same time, um, a lot of districts were not in a financial position to properly implement that in a way that contained compression. So it, it did create situations where a lot of grades were starting at that same minimum wage in order for it to work. Uh, and so, um, so we recognize that's still a challenge, and, uh, we're, uh, really committed to, to working towards a plan to sort of pull away from that. Um, and I think too, um, right, the part of, part of that sort of three-year goal, um, that we heard, uh, through Meet and Confer, right, is to eventually come to a point, uh, where we have schedules that reflect a 2% step increase. That would be historic. Uh, and so I think in the, um, you know, so just sort of in my normal work, you know, we've seen those range anywhere from half a percent to a percent. I think the, the 1% has been sort of in, in my career, sort of the, the largest step increase that I've encountered, um, in this work. Uh, and so that sort of desire, I think, through Meet and Confer to see that 2% is something that they call out, um, over a three-year period. Um, and then I think we also sort of stress that this is difficult to accomplish, uh, without having state partnership and, and in that investment in compensation, just due to the, the, the large volume, uh, of employees that we pay from state funds. Uh, so just, we recognize, we recognize why it's there and, um, just know that we're going to have, you know, challenges to work in that direction. Uh, the next slide sort of lifts up what the third concern was, and that was specifically around consistency in the hiring process. Uh, and so we did have, um, Dr. Giovanni, that was a part of the Meet and Confer, uh, panel that spoke, uh, on behalf of, of HR. Um, and I think we agree, I think we all can agree that, um, there should certainly be consistency in the hiring process, and, and we have a commitment, uh, to ensuring, um, that, uh, if staff, um, have examples or, or issues that they feel like were not handled consistently, we're, we're committed to investigating that, making sure that it doesn't occur again, and if there are things that we need to rectify, uh, we'll certainly do that. Um, and it felt like sort of most, um, most notably, um, from, from the dialogue, uh, the area where, uh, there was the greatest concern with the representation was making sure that folks were being consistently placed on our salary scales and getting consistently getting experienced credit in the same way, uh, as they onboarded, uh, into Durham Public Schools. So, um, certainly we, um, are, are committed to doing what we can, uh, to improve in that way, um, if folks feel like something hasn't occurred in, in a fair way. On the next slide, uh, we, we talked about this, just sort of the notion of, of, of the no caps. Um, uh, and so certainly we recognize that, uh, you know, sometimes these, the state schedules can be a bit binding. You know, there are, they, they represent the entire state of North Carolina, uh, and, and some communities like our own. It is just simply more expensive to live here, and, um, we sort of lifted up that concept, uh, when we talked about the MIT calculator tool, uh, and, you know, just sort of applying, um, a variety of communities in North Carolina through that calculator to see just the spread of what, what constitutes a living wage across the state of North Carolina. Um, and I do think it was just very important to note, um, that I, I could not find a county in North Carolina where $15 an hour was considered a living wage, right? And that's currently the state's minimum wage for state employees. So we've, uh, through, through that measuring stick, uh, we just couldn't find a county where 15 was sufficient. I think the, the lowest number I could find was about 19 an hour, and that was looking at some of our more sort of economically depressed communities in the state of North Carolina. So, um, I think we recognize even with the strides that the state made in, in, in the past few years with lifting up their minimum wage, uh, there certainly may be still a disconnect there, uh, with, with their reality and cost of living. Um, but again, it's something that we would, um, need to address cautiously and, and sort of within the limitations of, of our dollars a- as we work forward and, and develop a plan, uh, for classified employees in Durham. The next slide, uh, was of particular interest for me and my staff, uh, and so, uh, we came away, um, sort of the desire for there to be a bi-weekly pay option, uh, for our employees, uh, our classified employees. Uh, so the following day, um, from, from Meet and Confer, uh, I reached out to my colleagues, um, in the Big 12, um, just to get a sense of what are they doing, um, where this is concerned, uh, bi-weekly, bi-monthly? How are you handling it? What, what is the configuration of your payroll teams? How many people are you paying? Uh, and so we've gotten a pretty good response rate. Uh, we've got just a couple of districts in the Big 12 we haven't heard back from quite yet. Uh, and then my first phone call was to our payroll supervisor on Friday, and that was about a two-hour phone call, um, just to, um, talk through, how does that make you feel? What do you think we would need to do? Does it, does it feel possible if we did this, if we did that? How might that look, right? And so, um, really had some intentional conversation about that. Um, I think it feels, um, just from the districts that we have heard from at this point, I think, um, you know, the Meet and Confer process in, in particular encouraged us to have conversation, uh, with our colleagues in Wake about their current situation. Um, and at this point in time, um, they, they report that they're, they're doing this for bus and child nutrition, uh, in Wake County, and that they have kind of pressed pause on expanding that while they get feedback. Uh, and so at this point, they're feeling it's about 50/50, um, as to whether or not they move forward, uh, sort of with other groups there. And so just, um, and, and I would just kind of- And so just, and, and I would just kind of share, I feel that's probably an appropriate step for us here in Durham. You know, and it's, it's not that we don't trust the feedback that's coming through the meet and confer process, but I think as an administration, we may have some responsibility to do a survey just to see how our staff would feel about that type of change. It's, it's a very big change that we don't want to make, only to have certain sectors of our classified employees say, hey, we really didn't want that. And, and I, I could certainly see some areas where it might immediately make great sense. I, I think about our community ed program that does before and after care, that is a space where we have already received a lot of feedback in advance of the meet and confer process. And so we know that's an area where we may be able to make a quick change and, and move forward with that. But certainly, it, it feels appropriate to do a survey of some sort. But broadly speaking, at this point in time, we could, I could only find a couple of colleagues in the Big 12, really is three, that were doing some iteration of bi-weekly. Bi-monthly is pretty prominent, and so we are, as meet and confer noted, we're currently doing a bi-monthly process for bus and subs, and, but there's that desire to sort of move forward with, with bi-weekly. I think a particular concern where there are three months in the pay calendar, where our bi-monthly employees experience a three-week gap because they're particularly longer months, and, and so that does occur in the payroll calendar, and I think that seems to be sort of the genesis of the request. But certainly, we, we would want to sort of get some really good data of, of where that desire is the greatest among our classified employees, because we would need to contemplate changes to our pay calendars and, and finding an optimal time to execute that change, and then really contemplate the size and the structure of our payroll department to be able to accommodate that, that sort of thing. And so I think from my perspective, that, you know, the desire, or the feedback through meet and confer was to see something like this start in January, that feels very soon for, for the amount of legwork that we would need to do to make that happen in the right way. And so we would, we would very much really prefer, if we're going to make that kind of change, to look at the new fiscal year in July so that we can really do proper due diligence and, and make sure that we're moving forward with a change of that nature in, in the right way. So just wanted to spend a lot of time on that because it's a big change, and it's, may have, right, some financial impact to the district if we need to expand the size of the payroll department. And, and depending on how many groups move forward with that kind of change would affect the, how much payroll staff we would want to add in order to make that work. So there are some folks who did want me to just say no, like we're not, we don't want to make that change, but I, I think it's important for us to hear it out, explore it, see what it looks like for us, and if it's something that we can do, do that the best way that we can. So in the next slide, there was just a, a blend of other, of other items that came up that weren't necessarily numbered in the presentation, but just sort of various slides that, that were shared. And so one was just conversation about the grade differentials, and what degree of percentage does one change if you were to move from an, an NC five to an NC six, or six to seven, so forth? So there was some questions around that, I think in particular, when we're looking at NC one through five, where in the current state structure and in the current Durham structure, there is no incentive to move across sort of those early grades, and that's just a, a exhibit A of the compression that the minimum wage increase from the state created a number of years ago. And so we, sort of in an initial draft, we looked at just a minor adjustment there of, of building in a percent differential across those grades to do something. And so we, we did commit in, in the process to take another look at that and at least have a model on the table where it's a little bit more than a percent incentive across those early grades. And then I think obviously, right, there's some sensitivity with the group in terms of the progression from the conventional classified scales that range NC one to NC nineteen, and then the migration to our coordinators and up, right, in, in those sets of scales, right? So, you know, we've, we've committed to taking another look at, at comparing that segue for our scales as compared to some other places, to, to try to bring some comfort to the feedback that we got. The health professional scales were a space where we had some conversation, and so I think we just sort of reiterated, right, they're, they're sort of in a space on their own, we're dealing with unique situations there. It appears in the, the OT and the PT space, right, this is an area where board and, and administrations received a pretty consistent feedback, and we did, you know, look at how other folks were managing that population, and, and the trend has very much been to align them with related service providers who are certified, such as speech therapists. And so there's a lot of history with those OTs and PTs over time, they, in, in the history of the state, they have bounced back and forth between certified and classified in their designation, and for the past several years, they've landed in that classified space. And so just wanted to lift that up. And then there was a specific concern about the OT assistants who do very similar work to our occupational therapists, they are just not licensed or credentialed in the same way. And so we've made a commitment to evaluate that group again, just to make sure we have structured the, the MH12 scale in a way that's, that's meaningful and helps to better differentiate them from other types of assistants in the district. Obviously, you're right, there is concern about where does administration land in this, and, and how does this benefit administration compared to other folks? And, and I stressed to the folks that we met with last week that this is not our top priority to do things for administration in this process. We're very much committed to examining what is, what is the appropriate starting wage for Durham and, and taking care of our folks that are the, that are lower earners, and that was most certainly the consensus of the board about a month or so ago, that that was an important priority for this process, and we're moving forward in that way to, to honor, to honor that priority. There will be a point, you know, where we do eventually have a conversation about administrators, right? There are a number of us that are transferable to other industries, and, and there is, you know, opportunities there that we have to compete with, but certainly, it's not, it's not the priority. And another, another item that a lot of districts are still wrestling with, there, there have been really major changes to principal pay in the past few years in the state of North Carolina that created a structure where it was no longer really an incentive to our principals to migrate to central office work. And so we have really seen challenges there, and so that's, that's something that we, that we may contemplate sort of in the latter stages of this, but certainly, the living wage is our top priority as we move forward with this. Couple of slides up here, just in terms of next steps, so just in my conversations with Dr. Lewis, it felt very important to seek some additional layers of feedback. I think the, the group of folks who worked on the salary administration review process did, did really great work, and we'd like to apply that lens to what we're looking at here, in particular, in the areas where we know that some positions may need to be assigned to different pay grades. I really want to lean on, on those folks and, and let them apply their perspective to that, and, and have some other experts at the table to help guide that work in a meaningful way. And then our goal for these November meetings forthcoming is to pepper in all of those models and, and have cost attached. So I've started working with the budget department to, to bump up our existing employees to the, to possible scales and, and bring forward really what we're looking at with, with potential costs there. I think that's really sort of the most critical piece to this puzzle a, as we roll into budget season, and we prioritize and balance what's feasible for us to do in the, in, in this landscape. So on the next slide, I'm just happy to answer any questions that the board may have at this time.
Thank you, Mr. Teeter, for that thorough presentation, colleagues. Ms. Herrooff, we'll start with you.
Thank you. No questions, just a, a few comments. I just wanted to lift up Dr. Lewis and the administration, Mr. Teeter, the entire administration, and celebrate once again the fact that we made it through this first meeting of meet and confer, and I'm celebrating the fact that we're setting an example, like showing people that it's not so scary. This is how we as elected officials and as, as managers and things can do something that works with, you know, our, with, with working, the worker, the worker people that we work with. And so I wanted to lift that up and to, and to, again, congratulate making it through the first one. A lot of people didn't think that we could get here, it took a while to get there, so I was incredibly excited to see it take place, and I know a lot of people in community were very excited to see the first step as we're moving forward. I also wanted to lift up something that stood out to me that I really appreciated as we continue to grow and see this continue, there was a lens of humanity that I saw from, especially Mr. Teeter, when we were talking about particularly the bi-weekly pay option. It's sometimes, on the other end of things, it's hard to, to see things from various perspectives, from multiple lenses, when it feels like such a crucial thing, we want to do the best for our stakeholders. And what I heard from administration was lifting up of, you know, we want to do this and we want to consider, you know, how this is going to impact our other workers. And so I, I was encouraged to see that kind of conversation happening and hope that as we move forward, that this process will continue to illuminate all of the various aspects and perspectives of what decisions that, you know, that come to us, things that we are grappling with, how they impact us, and use that as an educational something so that we can, you know, when we're, we're understanding, how is it going to impact from various lenses, how these things impact all of us? And so I really appreciated that and want to encourage us to keep that cap of humanity on as we're on both sides, as we're exploring topics that are very, very difficult. And when, when it comes back to us, if we know that that lens of humanity has been put on it, and we're seeing it from multiple sides, when it comes back and when we're making a decision, my hope is that the meet and confer process will help us gain more understanding. So there's an educational aspect of this that I'm, that I saw budding, and hope that it can continue to, to grow. And then the last thing I wanted to say is that, the, again, I wanted to lift up your willingness to show that this is not just something that is not something, even though where we, what we had to go through to get to this point, I want us to understand that now we're actually modeling it, like it now that it's going, and that collaborative spirit that Dr. Lewis is speaking of, even when it's complex and complicated, I really appreciate how everybody showed up and how they, how we were able to get through it. So I'm, I'm going to step back, but I just wanted to express my gratitude for the process and my excitement, and to let you all know that there are many of us who are really excited that this process has begun. It's really valuing worker voice and promoting the very spirit of democracy that we are protecting, trying to protect as a nation. So thank you so much.
Ms. Byer.
Yeah, so I too want to celebrate this historic first meet and confer under policy meeting in Durham, North Carolina, in Durham Public Schools, and the leadership of, of everyone who came to the table. And I feel like excited, but also needing to ground things in truth and reality. And maybe I'm still reeling from the debacle or two that we've been through. And I, I want us to continue to look for ways that we can advocate at the state level together for what our students and our staff deserve. So I don't know, Chairman Sted, if the Durham delegation would welcome us over to Raleigh in the coming weeks together, or if there are ways that we can lead in that way to set up some meeting or conversation. And I feel like we should ground each of these slides, and all of this is contingent on strong federal, state, and local support. Like we, as a Board of Education, who love and value every employee, every student, have no taxing authority, have no revenue source. And so we sit so far downstream from where decisions are made on what people are paid. And so as much as we want to get these rates as high as possible and have the biggest ginormous steps in between year to year, and let people know that we will continue to lift you up, we're not making those decisions at this dais, we're not. We're downstream from that. And so we're still eight dollars an hour away from getting to twenty-five an hour, right? Eight dollars per starting person, and that rippling through an entire scale? Maybe, maybe we can talk with the county and get to twenty, or, you know, twenty over two years, right? We, we've been through multiple consultants trying to figure out the steps in between, and two percent, I just want, we cannot mathematically do that, and so I want us to be honest and truth-tellers with folks, not, not, it's not because we don't want to, but if we did things like that, we would have to cut employees, we would have to have less staff to be able to lift people that high with, with the state money and the local money that we have. So I dream of getting us to places that, that were talked about at that table, but I also want us to continue to, to have conversations, and, and I think the county's going to feel similar pressure, because while folks talked about fifty million dollars coming from Duke, I haven't seen it yet. I'd love to see it. But the county just raised property taxes for everyone in Durham, and so there are, there are limits and dreams to what we can do locally as we're dealing with, with increasing pressures from cuts from the federal and state level, and taking care of our people more with property taxes of all things that this board is not in control of. So I don't know that I have questions, I just, the, the, I think it's important for us to articulate, as much as we want to please our staff and say yes to everything, that it's, that it's incredibly important for us to be physically responsible and not get to a point where we were two years ago. We cannot do that to staff again. And so I appreciate you bringing different models and continuing to engage in this work. And if it's a multi-year plan, let's make really clear from, from the front that that's where we are. I had a question even about the men's and maxes. I think you should continue to, to have those as guideposts for our modeling. I think that's why you're bringing them, unless I'm misunderstanding that entirely. I don't think we've ever used those or capped people's salary in Durham, have we? I guess that's a question. Because that seemed to come up in that discussion quite a bit.
Yeah, and I think to answer that question, I think as a practice, I think with the, with the exception of the bus driver space, right, we, we've generally adhered with, within those ranges that, that the state has made available. And so I think kind of like we mentioned earlier, it would be a big, it would be a big shift, and we'd have to restructure how we do a lot of things i, if we deviate from those caps.
Yeah, so I guess I should formulate some questions, but, but mostly, I am, I'm so thankful that, that you all and DAE have come to the table, continue to wrestle with really hard things. But also, I, I really feel it's important for, for our board and this governance team to continue to live in, in the physical reality that, that we have been dealt while we advocate for what we know our folks for what we know our folks deserve. And, and I, we sit, those things are intention. And that doesn't mean we're not going to advocate as strongly as we can for, for maximizing wages and all the things. But I want to speak that tension into this as we, as we continue to to govern with the, with the limitations that are set by other entities. So, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Byer, Ms. Cardot.
Thanks, Mr. Teeter. Now I'm heels, what my colleagues have shared, just also wanted to reflect on the way also that you showed up at the first meet and confer meeting and really appreciate, again, the collaborative approach that you took to that process and that, and those that also entered that space in a collaborative way. And I hope to see more of that. I'm also excited about, I think there was, as Ms. Harold Goff referenced, some education that was budding that night, and I look forward to more and more of that, right? There were opportunities for administration to learn from the staff on the ground, which I think is incredibly valuable. And what you shared tonight, but also during the meeting the other night, is also really, that's education also, that's really, and I, really, really important. And so I think the, I look forward to seeing that continue and for us to then, with the shared understanding that comes from the, that education from both sides, us to get to a place where we can have more informed decision-making and make fiscally responsible decisions that also protect our staff. My specific questions are, just to clarify about the biweekly pay, because what you had shared about Wake County was interesting to me and I'm wondering, just want to make sure I understand. The, who else? Well, first of all, actually, biweekly versus bimonthly, the difference seems pretty small to me, right?
Yeah, so I think in the, in the bimonthly space, you're getting two checks per month, right? On a sort of a set, sort of interval dates. And so a, a ten-month employee, right, would see twenty checks, a twelve-month employee would see twenty-four checks. And then in a, in a biweekly model, it's quite literally every other week. And so you may have some months where that is still two checks a month and there could be some months where it's three, depending on the length of that month. But, you know, a twelve-month employee in that situation would have twenty-six checks versus twenty-four as an example because of that cadence.
And which of our employees are currently being paid on the bimonthly? Could you, I know you stated that, I'm wondering if you could repeat that.
Yes, so our bus drivers and our substitute teachers are currently on the bimonthly model.
And the remainder of our employees are paid on a
Monthly.
Monthly basis, okay. So, okay, that's very helpful. And then also wondering, just as I'm learning here, Wake County has like a, is doing the biweekly for bus drivers and school nutrition staff, you said, right? Also bus monitors? Or how did they fall into them?
I did not, I think the, the word bus was used, sort of in the reply, so that, you know, and I can, we communicate regularly, so I can get clarity on that, but, yeah.
And then who else? What other districts were doing the biweekly?
So just sort of to run, I can run down the list of really what we've gotten so far. And so Charlotte Mecklenburg responded that they're doing all classified in that way on a biweekly approach. Cumberland is currently monthly, but planning to move to a biweekly model possibly in the spring. And so they're trying to get some other rocks cleared out of the way with their work in that district. Union County currently has no biweekly, but on a bimonthly basis, they're handling bus and their before and aftercare programs. Johnston County, no biweekly, but their bus, child nutrition, and instructional aides are paid bimonthly. Cabarrus County says almost all classified are paid biweekly. And he really lifted up a specific emphasis on how much work that was. They seem to have a very lean payroll department, right? That, that one really kind of gave me pause. So they're paying about forty-five hundred employees a month with three payroll tax and, and handling their classified biweekly. So that's a really big lift that's going on in Cabarrus. Gaston indicates they're doing biweekly only for their employees who are hourly in nature and not their classified employees who receive a salary. And then Onslow is the other district I've heard from at this point, and they're handling all of their classified on a monthly basis. And so happy to, I think we'll fill in a couple of more blanks before the week is up and I'll be happy to get that update in Dr. Lewis's weekly update so that the board has it in that space.
That's great. Thank you for sharing all of that. And I really, I think what's at the heart of this that I appreciate that you're doing is helping us and our EROs to understand, and all of our staff to understand, that with each request or each change, there's a cost to it, right? And so what you do, what we try to do as leaders is weigh the benefits and the costs. And that's what for this request, for each of the others, we'll all be trying to do together and all learning about the benefits and costs of each of the requests and each decision that we're making. So, thanks so much again.
Mr. Tab, and then Ms. Chavez, I'll come to you next.
Thank you, Chair Onsted. Thank you, Mr. Teeter, very much for your presentation. I do want to uplift what all of my colleagues have said, but the, the one thing that I really appreciate is being collaborative. And, and that spirit is very important for meet and confer, and I've been saying this all along. I do want to just caution us to not to overextend anything or to give anybody the impression that we might can do something. And I hope that we would be just really honest and upfront as we move through that. But I do really appreciate the honesty and, and the transparency. I appreciate that, thank you.
Ms. Chavez? Any questions or?
Just, I, I will be very brief. Thank you very much. Thanks for following up and putting together this presentation. So quickly, I won't reiterate all the lovely things that were said, but I did want to say I'm very happy that we are talking about raising our minimum wage and figuring out how we can do that. So thank you so much, Mr. Teeter, and everyone who has worked on this.
Thank you all for your comments, for your questions. Don't leave, Mr. Teeter, I got a couple of things for you, okay? I do feel like I want to lift up something Ms. Byer talked about, like all contingent upon funds. I think I want to, it feels like taking the air out of the room a little bit, but being really honest about where we are. And even in raising salaries, if we don't get funding from the county and we're having different calculations about where to put those dollars, and so maybe we'll put it at the bottom of our slides or just cut salary schedules, that all of this is contingent upon what the amount we get from the county. As far as bringing some proposals back to us in November, do you have like a plan of how are you going to do that? We've got a lot of models out here. Is there like a best-case scenario, worst-case scenario? Is there a clear recommendation that might come to us?
Fantastic question. So I think we, so there, there is quite a spectrum you did that, that we will evaluate. I think some of it's just to, some of it we know would really be a reach for Durham, right? So the, the model, the model of implementing that twenty-five bottom floor with two percent, right? That would be just sort of the most expensive thing possible that could be done. And so, but we're, we're committed to at least showing what that looks like and, and what it would cost so that there's some perspective that can come around that. And then I think also, right at the other end of the spectrum, we, we have an approach that's a little more prudent, that, that looks to, you know, bring in, sort of, sort of to work more closer to the, the county's minimum wage and, and looking at a way to get, get there and, and you know, a couple, a couple of looks at that of the half percent steps or the percent step is making some kind of progress, you know, towards recognizing the service, right? So, and then we'll, you know, we'll have at least sort of one configuration in between. And, you know, so we want to make sure we at least have that. And as we get feedback and, and folks have other things that they want to see, once they have those, you know, we're, we're positioned to, to continue to fine tune that and bring other things to look at so that we can all make the best decision possible and, and prioritize in the right way.
Looking forward to seeing these dollar numbers as they come in November. I think it's important for us to ground this conversation and what that looks like. The other question I have for you is around, when you do bring, I guess, back information regarding biweekly or bimonthly and all of those things, can we make sure we also include whatever costs that comes with that? A little while ago, when we went to moving biweekly for substitutes, or excuse me, bimonthly for substitutes and for bus drivers, there was cost. They were like, we need additional payroll tech to be able to manage this work. And so I just want us to be mindful of what additional staff people, which would need to go into a budget ask, that we would be requesting for, for that one or any of the other different recommendations that we're going through to be clear about the, the full cost of those.
Yeah, and we thank you for allowing that. I think that decision was made before I was here to, you know, to, to make that change and bring that staff member on. And I think the, the decision was to bring back a retired payroll tech who's working twenty-nine hours a week. And she is handling bus driver and school nutrition payroll and is really so good at what she does that she's also handling three schools in, in addition to taking care of those two groups. So she's been, that, that's been a great change for the department to be in a position where that person could come back and support that work, yeah.
I'm glad that we have that. If people have concerns, in your presentation previously, you had moved some folks around grades as you were looking at where people were placed. If people have additional concerns about their salary around, around grades, not necessarily an individual thing, but actually I'm placed at a lower level than I think I should be, where should they go to take those questions or concerns?
So at this point, right, we certainly have, so far, we have heard from some department heads about some, about some items. And so, you know, I've kind of developed a running list of those and we'll run, we'll run them through the process as well with the salary administration review to, to make sure we explore those internal and external pressures and, and make sure that those, those get a fair look. You know, I'm hesitant to say it, but I think at this point, I'm sort of the best person to reach out to and I'll make sure that it's run through the process. And, and when we have the first meeting with, with the committee, we'll put some additional procedure around it and, and try to get sort of a, a more generic kind of contact point for it versus me directly. But in the meantime, it's fine to reach out to me.
Jeremy Teeter is who they should reach out to. And then will that committee have a cadence on me?
I think
Or is it too early?
I think that's what we'll establish, right? When we can come together for the first time and, and start to run our due diligence on that.
Thank you. Any other questions, colleagues, that are coming? Thank you, Mr. Teeter.
Thank you.
The next item on our agenda is our closed session.
Move that we go into closed session for the reasons stated on the agenda. Second.
It's been moved by Ms. Byer and seconded by Ms. Harold Goff that we go into closed session for the reasons stated on the agenda. Is there any other discussion? We'll do a voice vote, Ms. Chavez.
This is Emily Chavez, I vote aye.
Ms. Rogers?
Aye.
Ms. Harold Goff?
Aye.
Ms. Byer?
Aye.
Mr. Tab?
Aye.
Ms. Cardot?
Aye.
And I vote aye as well. That was unanimous, we're now in closed session. We will not come back streaming, so thank you all so much for joining us this evening.